Margaret, roll call please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Garlick Lawrence Eddy.
Here.
Supervisor Brownow.
Here.
Supervisor Davidson.
Here.
Supervisor Crowdy.
Here.
Supervisor Kaiser.
Here.
Supervisor Lazaro.
Present.
Supervisor Cronin Wetter.
Here.
Supervisor Locke.
Here.
Supervisor McGreevy.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
Supervisor Hossabell.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first order of business tonight, we have a presentation, the 2018 Brightest Star Awards, to four local students. I think what I'll start first, I'll ask Chairman McGreevy to read the resolution number 40 for a motion to suspend the rules in order, first, I'll ask you to make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to suspend the rules of order to introduce item number 40 found on page 29 of the agenda.
I second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Proceed Chairman McGreevy.
Number 40, 2018 Workforce Development Youth Bureau Board's Brightest Star Recognition. Whereas the 2018 Brightest Star Award recognizes four middle school students in Seneca County, and whereas nominations are received from school personnel and other youth servicing agencies, and whereas students were nominated and chosen for consistently reflecting the five points of light, academics, involvement in school or community activities, responsibility, respect, and compassion, and whereas this resolution was approved by the Health and Human Services Committee on June 26, 2018, now therefore be it resolved that the Seneca County Youth Bureau and Youth Board and the Seneca County Board of Supervisors recognize and congratulate the following students who are being selected for the 2018 Brightest Star Award. Kirsten Grace, South Seneca Middle School, Town of Ovin. Logan Patengill, Seneca Falls Middle School, Town of Seneca Falls. Kirsten Lajuski, Seneca Falls Middle School, Town of Seneca Falls. And Deanna Simmons, Seneca Falls Middle School, Town of Seneca Falls.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That motion is accepted and approved. So, with that, I would like to call on Margaret, Mike, Tracy, and Annie to come forward to the podium along with Supervisors McGreevy and Lazaro, the Chair and Vice Chair of this committee, to do the presentations. They have quite a crowd here. Okay, I understand we have two recipients here. Greg, you have your notes. You want to, do you have your notes? Why don't you read about Kristen?
Kristen is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Grace.
Go right up to the mic and speak loudly, please.
Yes. Kirsten is the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Grace of Ovin. She is a high 90s student in all of her academics and also learns through research. She chooses to understand topics of environmental and societal concern. She recently researched and shared with her classmates the dangers of blue-green algae in our waterways and what can be done to eliminate it. Kirsten is in the band, chorus student, writes for the school newspaper, and is the sixth grade class treasurer. She is always eager to take on additional student roles in school. Kirsten exemplifies respect, compassion, and responsibility. She never sees her needs as being more important than others. She is positive, encouraging, and cooperative with her peers and adults in her life. Congratulations, Kirsten.
Congratulations to you. Come on right over here and bring your family over and we'll take a little picture. Mom and Dad, congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Now I'll call on Vice Chair Supervisor Lazaro.
Our next recipient is Deanna Simmons. Deanna is the daughter of Ms. Amanda Rodriguez of Seneca Falls. Deanna always does her schoolwork in a timely manner and works well with others. She has a great attitude and doesn't become easily distracted. Deanna has participated in the Girls on the Run for the last three years. Previously, she was a cheerleader in the Seneca Falls Cheerleader Football League and the Seneca Falls United Summer Soccer League. She also participates in Girl Scouts. Deanna is kind and compassionate, a great big sister too. She is highly motivated at home and school. She manages her time wisely to accomplish many everyday life tasks. Congratulations, Deanna.
Deanna, you and your family, come forward, please. Congratulations. Great job. Come on over here and we'll take a picture of you and your family and...
It's also her birthday today, Mr. Shepherd.
Happy birthday! Congratulations.
Want to introduce her two sisters? I hear she's a great big sister. Thank you.
Thank you. Smile for the camera.
One more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda tonight, we have a presentation regarding Indigent Legal Services from Joanne from the New York State Office. It looks like Mike Maris.
Supervisor, Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Fisher, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Joanne McCray. Also with her today is Amanda Orin and Jane New. They're from the New York State Office of Indigent Legal Services. They just wanted to give a quick overview where we stand today after the Harrell decision that you've heard about, read about, where Seneca County stands, and where we are going forward.
Would you explain us the, what that legal action was, decision you just mentioned?
Yes, she has got that in her presentation to go over.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Now, are you okay, Sandy?
Oh, I'm fine. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to address all of you this evening and my regards, our regards, best regards from our Director William Leahy, who wanted to be here but wasn't able to, did some prior engagement, and to offer my congratulations to the inspiration of our future. It's just wonderful to be President, to see these awards being delivered.
Well, good evening and thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having me.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just want to take a few minutes to obviously talk a little bit about the work that we're doing in our agency and obviously if there's any questions, this would be a great opportunity to be able to answer whatever concerns or questions you might have. Just to get a little bit background of our agency, we were enacted in 2010. So we're a fairly new state agency and our mandate by law is to basically support and improve the quality of representation that's being offered to those individuals who can't afford a lawyer in family and criminal court proceedings statewide. We also are responsible to monitor that quality, report back, and basically part of that reporting process to allow the opportunity to provide funds to all of those counties that have had to deal with that unfunded mandate in order to help support those counties through that process. Since the time of the enactment was come, our agency was brought into a settlement agreement. Some of you may have heard about this case in the news. It's called Harrell-Herring versus the State of New York. And that was a settlement agreement that actually focused on five counties. Those counties included Ontario, Skyler, Onondaga, Washington, and Suffolk. Now, the reason that these counties were actually focused upon the settlement agreement really was to provide a sample of the county statewide. So when that case actually was enacted, when it brought itself up before the courts, the intention was to bring these samples before the courts and to talk about improving the overall quality of representation statewide. What ended up happening however was that when the courts received that case, they focused primarily on those individuals within those five counties and disregarded the support that was required statewide. Since the time of that settlement agreement, the actual agreement itself focused on a few different areas to improve within the five counties. That included the idea of making sure that lawyers that were assigned to represent people who were not afforded attorneys in criminal court cases could actually maintain the caseload, right? That they wouldn't have caseloads that would not be necessarily optimal to be able to provide the kind of quality representation that's expected that the county obviously is having to support. The other part of the settlement agreement required the idea of providing an attorney at every arraignment in a criminal court proceeding, something that upstate New York has really had to tackle most recently despite the fact that it's been a constitutional mandate for several years. And the other portion of the settlement agreement was the idea of actually basically improving the overall quality of representation. The idea that if it's a complicated case that might need additional resources like having investigators, having experts available, that the attorneys would have the funding available to be able to use those resources to represent their clients. And this settlement agreement has been going on now for the past three years in those five counties, and it has been fully state-funded with respect to those areas that I just spoke about. However, despite these five counties being fully funded by the state to support those mandates, the rest of New York State has remained unfunded with respect to addressing the same areas of need. Despite that, our agency, as some of you may know, we continue to issue distributions to the counties to support mandated representation of family criminal court proceedings. We have competitive grants that the counties can apply for, which I believe your county has done so in the past. It has been awarded some of these grants. What has recently happened though is as of April 9th of last year, the Governor, with the legislative support, has actually enacted a new law asking our agency to draft three plans for statewide implementation of a settlement agreement that would be dependent solely upon state funding, not to become a burden to any of the counties within the state. And that actual law also included New York City. So as a result of that, by December 1st of 2017, we were required to draft three plans for all of the counties statewide, excluding the five counties that were involved in the settlement agreement. And our plans had to include New York City as well. We had to address the idea of what each county would require with respect to providing quality improvement in representation in criminal defense cases, so has been the case in the settlement agreement. The idea of making sure that lawyers in every county who are providing this representation actually can carry caseloads that are manageable. And finally, the idea of supporting every county's efforts to get lawyers to an arraignment when necessary. And so, since that time, we drafted three plans for every county in New York State. Those plans were submitted timely by December 1st of 2017. They're still under review. However, the Governor and the legislation has approved funding to implement those plans. Originally, the Governor and the Executive Office had put together a bill and a proposal for appropriation of over $250 million to be distributed statewide within the next five years by April of 2023 so that we could achieve these three plans for every county in New York City. And for the first year of those plans, as of April 1st of 2018, we have $50 million to begin the first year. And I just want to spend one or two minutes on each plan just to give you an idea of what we're looking at here. When it came to addressing the needs of Seneca County, we wanted to make sure that there was funding that were being made available, again, solely a fund that would be made available by the state with no requirements on the county to be burdened by this requirement achieving the plan. We want to make sure that you have sufficient numbers of attorneys available to provide this representation of criminal court proceedings. We want to make sure that with respect to having your arraignment process goes smoothly, that there are lawyers available to be there to provide the representation when required to do so by the courts. And finally, to make sure that there's an opportunity to improve the overall quality of representation, things like making sure that the lawyers are properly trained and that they have the resources that are necessary. And of that $50 million, we've had some discussions with your county to talk about the fact that these funds are currently available based on the caseloads that were reported to us from your county in 2016, and we hope to begin the process to start working with all of you to basically get those plans to contract. I will say our contract process hopefully will not be so overly burdensome for the county. We expect each county in the state to have one contract, and that contract will be a five-year contract. The first of the five years will be fully described in the contract, and then we'll obviously have each of the years of the five years towards the achieving, the distribution from the $250 million to be spelled out for Seneca County spelled out in that contract. The funds that are being made available are to support things like making sure that we have enough attorneys available, whether it's increasing people from part-time to full-time. These funds could cover not only increase in their salaries, but also the fringe that might accommodate that increase. We have made it very clear to the counties that these funds cannot replace these services and what provisions are available now to those representative representatives, those mandated representatives like your public defender's office or any signed counsel. So, anything that's in place with the distributions you're already receiving from our agency as well as competitive grants will not be replaced. These funds are made to supplement those services. We also expect the idea that these funds could actually help support your new endeavor to, you know, centralize your arraignment plan for the county. And with the expectation that again, there would be no necessary spending on the part of the county to achieve these plans. And so with that, I'd say we're very eager to work with all of you, and if you have any questions for me, I'd rather leave a little time to be able to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions by the board? Joanne, I have a question.
Yes.
Then, of the other 57 counties that did not have the same thing as the first five counties, did your department come up with a dollar value of what that was costing the other 57 counties?
So, it is a great question you asked, and a couple of things. I will say also, I have brought an actual copy of the legislation that I can leave with all of you. There's hopefully sufficient copies for everyone so that you can actually take a look at it. It describes our obligation as well as basically what the expectations are with respect to state funding in this endeavor. What we did was, we looked at your caseloads for every county from 2016, and we actually provided an estimate of what it would look like to achieve full coverage of these caseload standards that we produced statewide by April of 2023. And that's how we've basically taken the $250 million and did the division up between the counties. So, in your county, for example, your caseloads have been fairly manageable. Your public defender, your assigned house have been doing a great job at trying to maintain those caseloads. There's a little, there's some funding available for Seneca County to be able to improve their overall quality, bring it up to the new standards that we've recently developed. These standards, by the way, were actually incorporated in the five counties for the Harrell-Herring settlement agreement. And in our plans that were produced in December 1st, 2017, we recommended that those same standards be applied statewide as they have been in the five counties already. And these standards have been funded by the state within those five counties. So just to give you an example, we get $50 million distributed out of all the counties, 57 counties in New York City for year one. Currently, those five counties get $23 million, just for the five counties, to implement those plans. The legislation does ask however, that obviously none of the counties are to meet these burdens of achieving our plans, to work with us to achieve those plans by April 2023 unless there's state funding made available. When there is state funding made available, the legislation clearly directs us to ask the counties to act in good faith, to work with us to achieve those plans. And I think that within every county we've spoken to, there seems to be an optimism to be able to work with us to get that state funding in the door as soon as possible.
So would this be implemented or handled through the public defender's office?
Yes, I think we've been working with the county attorney's office, the public defender's office, with your managers, basically make sure that whatever priorities are identified for Seneca County, we want to work with you to achieve those priorities. We understand one thing, that every county is the same, so we have individual plans and priorities for every single county. And as we've done in the past, we want to work with the county for you all to identify what those priorities might look like so we can basically move the county forward. And that's one of the reasons we're very grateful to have the opportunity to have this working relationship with all of you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Lazaro.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. You had mentioned that we're going to get some funds. Once we get the funds, then we're going to implement the legislation. Whenever you get new funds, there's management of those funds. Do you see us hiring staff to manage those funds? Or would the President, as you said, we manage the caseloads very well. I have to congratulate Mr. Maris also. He does a really great job.
Does a great job, yes.
And so we do manage our caseloads, but with the additional funds, there's always a management of those funds. How do you see that being handled?
I'm very happy you asked that question. There's a couple of different aspects of this plan that we have to put forward. One is we have to have, we have an obligation to collect data, for instance, from each county so that we can monitor the value improvement over time. And obviously to monitor whether the funds are sufficient or whether we need more funds to be attributed by the state, you know, based on caseloads each year. We have had offices actually request if they have some administrative support to work with us in terms of collecting data. We provided some funding actually to ask each county to come up with a data officer who would be willing to work with the providers, like Mike, as well as our office, to make sure that the data gets basically transferred back and forth fairly smoothly. So obviously, if for example, any of the providers need that administrative support, these funds can be made available to make that cost.
Thank you.
Supervisor Davidson.
Yes, ma'am. Would you name the five counties again, as you said?
Yes, most definitely. So the five counties that were engaged in the settlement agreement were Ontario County, Skyler County, Onondaga, Washington, and Suffolk. So basically you can see sort of the variation across the state. And they were really meant to be sample counties of different systems because every county has its own system and its own challenges, right? We've got the rural counties, larger counties, urban counties, et cetera. So, they were really intended to be that way. Unfortunately, when the case came up to the court and there was a certification for the class that could be represented in the lawsuit, the class was limited to the individual clients in those five counties only. But, it's wonderful to note that the state has recognized its obligation not only to support these areas I talked about for improvement within those five counties, but it recognized that the obligation carries itself forward to all of the counties in New York State and New York City.
Anybody else? If not, Joanne, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
You and your staff, and Mike, keep her contact information close.
We're going to answer any questions, and thank you again for all your time. Appreciate it. Oh, thanks, Jane. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, yes, you're welcome. Thank you. I want to salute the legislation that we just did. Thank you again.
Okay, next, we have our usual open privilege of the floor. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the board? If so, please step forward. Ann, what's your name, where you live, please?
Good evening. I'm back again. Linda Zwick. I'm a board member with the Town of Fayette. This is concerning the River Road and Yellow Tavern Road again. It's now July 10th, and the River Road and Yellow Tavern Roads are still closed, although a new sign went up today that says now it's going to be closed until July 13th. We are in the fourth week with no activity in either of any of the bridges, and the roads remain closed. On June 14th, I contacted Sam Priam by email about our concerns and that no one was working on the bridges. He did return my response and said, I quote, "I anticipate them being done weather permitting by July 4th," unquote. Well, the weather's been wonderful, but whatever. And that evening, County Manager Shepherd attended our town board meeting in Fayette at the request of our supervisor. He listened, not only to us, but also to others who were in attendance with the same issues. At that time, he did state that the roads would be open by the end of June. After no updates or anyone working on any of the bridges, on June 25th, I again sent an email to Sam Priam, this time by request of the farmers in the area who are affected by the closures. This was his response. Quote, "After having our progress meeting with the contractor this morning, it appears that the bridges will be closed for another two weeks until July 9th." Excuse me. "The general contractor's crew has been delayed on another job, their work consisting of sandblasting, priming, and painting. Though the pavement has been done on the bridges, the work left, striping, sandblasting, priming, and painting, still needs to be done. You may see strippers this week, but not a whole lot of activity till the following week when it comes to prepping and painting the structures," unquote. Now that was the 25th of June, and of course, July 4th fell right the next following week after that, and nobody was there last week working either. So I went ahead and posted his reply on our Town of Fayette website, on our front page, so any of our residents had any questions, they could see where the answers were. We have three very large farms in our area that the closing of the bridges affect. They are Allen and Brett Harris Farm, Douglas Fryer Farm, and Mayberry's Trucking. And I'm sure many of you and most of you are familiar with them. The Harris Farm is totally divided by the bridge. The entrance to the farm is west of the bridge, and Allen Harris's house is east of River Road on Yellow Tavern Road. He needs to drive two and a half miles to get to his farm, and he's only less than a half a mile from the farm, from where he lives. They either own or rent land on both sides of Yellow Tavern Road or on both sides of the bridge. The time that was wasted and the money that's been expended for fuel, gas, et cetera is totally unacceptable. It is no longer a quick run back to the farm if there's a problem or if tools are needed. Bruce Mayberry, I spoke with Bruce Mayberry about his issues also. He has many 18-wheelers that come in and out of his business on Yellow Tavern Road, east of the bridge, and they need to travel four to five miles to get to a road that can support the heavy loads that they carry. Now this is only four to five miles, one way to get to the west side. Then they got to come back home again. And he's running like 12 to 15 trucks in and out of there a day, back and forth. Again, time and money is wasted on fuel for these rigs. The same is true for the farm equipment. Traveling from field to field, farm to farm is expensive enough without having to add additional miles to each run. Douglas Fryer Farm, unfortunately Douglas wanted to be here tonight, but he sent me an email, and here is what he would like me to say. "To the Sign County Board of Supervisors, I'm Doug Fryer, a Town of Fayette farmer. I have asked Linda Zwick to read this letter for me as I have difficulty getting around later in the day. I'm writing this letter in regards to the West River Road and Yellow Tavern Road bridges that are closed at the same time. I had no warning that this was going to happen, no big deal. We just had to make alternate plans to deal with the situation. Then in the middle of this time of being closed, I heard that there was no reason for them to be closed, just waiting for painters. I don't know who is responsible for the detours, but much traffic went to Marshall Road with a narrow bridge on a dangerous curve. Yellow Tavern Road detour went to the Town of Fayette Roads, Post, and Allen, which have loose soil, stone, excuse me, potholes and washboard issues. Very dangerous for people who have never driven on these kinds of roads. Two other Town of Fayette Roads are getting extra traffic, which are night, and so..." Two other Town of Fayette Roads are getting extra traffic, which are Knight and Stacy Roads. The worst part of this detour is that we have had to spend more time on Fayette Roads and extra traffic, which they cannot handle. I'm sure no one can understand this if they don't experience it. In a 10-day period, around the end of June, this detour cost me 69 extra miles on farm equipment, 92 miles on trucks, equal to eight to 10 man-hours of lost time. This is also right in the middle of harvest season. Sincerely, Doug Fryer." Our farmers work daylight to dusk. Now they need to work even harder for the money they get. They are also at the mercy of the weather, and this dry weather is not favorable for them and their crops. But it's perfect for your contracting crew. Fortunately for your contractor, they are going to get paid regardless. Oh, so do the farmers. But the added expenses that these closures have caused our farmers will take a big bite out of the bottom line. Four weeks unnecessarily, these bridges have been closed, and as of today, there's still nobody working on them. I really cannot believe that there is nothing that can be done to get these completed. I would think going forward, a more careful look at the contracts of work to be done is critical. Also, keeping the towns involved in the process can alleviate a lot of issues. A little more integrity and consideration on the part of the county would be a great first step. And by the way, when the county manager was there, we were talking about some limbs that were hanging. As you come out Marshall Road onto West River Road, it's a strange angle you cannot see for traffic. While supposedly some were taken care of, if you're in a car, everything is fine. I drive a car, and I can see. If I drive my pickup truck, I can't see anything. I have to pull out into traffic and look. So those still need to be taken care of as a safety point. So thank you again for listening to me.
Thank you for coming in, Linda, again. And quite honestly, I know exactly what you're talking about, because there's paving on 520.
That's correct.
Since Monday. And we couldn't, I had a hard time getting to this meeting tonight. I would have gone down River Road if that was open.
Absolutely. Is there any reason why we can't get those contractors on these two roads and get them open?
I will have our Director of Public Works look into the matter further and see what can be done. These are New York State DOT-implemented projects. So we're at their mercy too. But we'll certainly continue forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kaiser.
Yeah, Mr. Shukley, I think you just answered my question. I was just going to ask, Mr. Priam probably isn't here tonight. There he is. What is the extent of our say-so, our decision-making on these bridge projects? Do we have any say on both of them being done at once? Do we have any say about their scheduling?
The contract documents did not say anything that said, hey, you have to do it in this order, or you have to be done at this certain time, other than the full extent of the contract. The contract is 180 days, but beyond that, there's nothing in the contract.
Let's hope they don't take all 180 days.
They will not. They're supposed to, they should be done before school starts, supposedly, according to their schedule.
So this, like, so as I understand it, as supervisor, we don't, summarize it, we don't have say on all of that.
No, these are DOT-implemented projects. Anybody else? Supervisor Lawrence Enney, did you have some follow-up?
Thank you very much. One thing that we asked at the last meeting, Sam, was why can't we open the roads if we're just waiting for painting and striping? And you said because of the confusion it was caused. Well, I think if we could have opened it at that time, they would have had an extra week that they could have used these roads, and now we're way late again. So again, on behalf of the Town of Fayette and the residents, and actually everyone that lives in Seneca County, because now we have three major thoroughfare roads that we're going to go from east to west, or vice versa, that nobody could get down. So I would hope that you, as the Public Works Commissioner, could open those roads until they're ready to paint and strike.
Is there anybody else would like to petition the board? Rick, I see you moving forward. How can we help you tonight?
Fred Connaught Jr., and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Barrett Fire District. We were never told that the roads were going to be closed with the Yellow Tavern Road, which affects us, or the River Road, which could affect us for mutual aid, and both of them for mutual aid. Our fire district's not short of the bridges, but we are mutual aid to border city and Waterloo, and that affects us. I made some phone calls when they first closed them. Took quite a while to get a response back, but I got a response back from everybody. And he said they'd be done by the 10th. So I said, okay, and I got told the same as Linda did, that, you know, it would take us, if we were to shut the roads down and so on, or open them up and then shut them down again, it'd be somewhat confusing and so on and so forth. But my granddaughter had a seizure. He called the ambulance, and the ambulance stayed at the end of the driveway, because they didn't know how to get to Geneva from Palm Alley because all the roads are closed. Okay? So that's one thing, okay? The fire department's another thing. The roads are not open, and nobody has notified any of the departments, nobody, any of the departments, that they're still closed. So if you don't open the roads up and there's a fire, let's just say that Dougie Fryer has a fire and loses a barn, I don't know if the county's liable or not. Okay? And if I, if it did happen, I would really wank to the county if I was a resident, taxpayer. Now, if the contractor, and I haven't seen this contract, but I've been a contractor for 45 years, and yes, you get 180 days to finish, or you get this many, but you're supposed to have consecutive workdays, it's in your contract, you're supposed to have a lot of things in your contract. I talked to the county people, and I heard about minority contractors and this. I don't want to hear this, but I want the damn road done. I want it open. You go down to County House Road, down there in front of Lot Farms, and look at the asphalt that's been tore up on 414 with the rubber from the trucks going across County House Road or to Marshall Road, and it's taken all their road, all the traffic from Ontario County. The other, Thursday, the 4th, we're working in Geneva. I come across there, and I counted, I quit counting at 22 town and county trucks from Ontario County. That's when I quit counting, and they were still coming. And they weren't driving 40 miles an hour either. You're creating an awful hazard. And I understand you got a contract, but I also know if there's job meetings and so on and so forth, you can get after the contractor. If he doesn't really do his job, so on and so forth, I've been there. You get after him, you give him a 10-day notice, if he doesn't reply in 10 days, you can terminate his contract. Now, let's get with it. You know, you asked that to be a housing, I don't know what you call it, but emergency center for the county. We agreed to it. We're doing updates out of our budget to make the county look better, the emergency part of it. Well, if we're doing our part, why don't you guys do your part, so we can do the rest of our part by providing fire service? There is the fire department you notified. If you re-novify the ambulance today, do you send them an email?
I send 911 email.
What does 911 got to do with letting the people know? Because if you sent 911, they didn't contact me. They didn't contact our fire, did they contact you today?
Rick, would you speak to your remarks, please?
Well, nobody's contacted nobody.
Well, we'll continue to look into it and...
Well, you've been looking into it, you've been looking into it since June. Let's get with the program.
Make your point.
Absolutely. Some draws, well, we'll drop some words.
Yeah, more than once.
Supervisor Lozaro.
About two years ago, I went to the New York State Association of Counties meeting, and they had their training on planning for road closures. I would suggest that we get a master plan for road closures from A to Z, and start that as soon as possible, so this doesn't happen in, this doesn't happen next year or the year after that. I think there's a problem here. It's a real problem, and we need to fix it. So get a committee together, planning for road closures. When the contractors aren't there, you can easily open up a road, have a, have a day-to-day person, see what works going on, and, you know, close the roads on a day-to-day basis, announce it. But, you know, just get a plan together to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. We'll keep moving forward. Is there anybody else would like to talk to the, to the board tonight under this? Do we have any new topics other than the closed River Road?
Excuse me, I don't want to speak to the board, but to Sam to ask, so if it's under your realm and you're authorized, can you open the road, at least Yellow Tavern, until they're ready to paint and strike? Will you be able to do that tomorrow and open it? Because I think the people want to know that.
I can't guarantee that.
Are you authorized, are you able to open that road?
I can ask and find out if they will do it.
And then let me know?
I will.
So is there... Supervisor Kaiser.
Who are you going to ask?
PJ Bruckel, they're the contractor.
And the contractor can tell you no, even though they aren't working?
I don't even know if they have the equipment to move the barriers, to be perfectly honest.
Well, I know the town does. The town does. We'd be more than happy to move those barriers.
I know, I know River Road, they're going to be done Thursday, because the road will be open, and then they'll be working on Yellow Tavern.
Is that this Thursday, Sam?
Yes, sir. They don't know how to schedule. They really don't, obviously.
I know, but I'm kind of surprised that they have that. You can't open the road then, as the Public Works Commissioner, until they're ready to paint and strike? Because that is a good question. I thought you told me you could, but you said you wanted to avoid confusion.
I did.
Okay. So if, can you then?
I was trying to play devil's advocate and have these people do what they were telling me they were going to do, is get this thing open July 4th, and it didn't happen.
I get it, and now you see what's resulted.
Yeah, I did.
So again, my question, the question is either yes or no. Do you have the authority to open up Yellow Tavern Road tomorrow?
I probably could, but I probably will not.
Well, there you are, folks. If you want to know why not, give Sam Priam a call, because I, for the life of me, can't understand why you wouldn't open it. And it takes how long to put barricades back up when they're finally ready to come in and do the work? I guess the farmers, then, can give you a... I don't know why you wouldn't do it, Sam.
Okay, moving on. You beat that one to death pretty well.
I guess.
Okay, if there's no one else that would like to address this board, I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Sorry, the regular, new, 12th board meeting and discussion for getting on the place. And you always...
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the 612 and 626 minutes. Motion made and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. That's passed. Reports of standing committees. First, I'll call on Supervisor McGreevy, Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Human Services Committee met on Tuesday, June 26th. In addition to the 12 resolutions that the committee reviewed and approved, and which appear on tonight's agenda, the Health and Human Services Committee also approved refilling the position of one social welfare examiner in the Division of Human Services. We also received information about an IRS notification, 1075, which requires all employers to implement background checks for applicants for jobs requiring access to federal tax information. Therefore, all prospective employees for CSU are now required to have federal background checks and fingerprinting conducted before hiring. The cost will be approximately $100 per applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ryan. Next, Supervisor Davidson, Human Resources and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on Tuesday, June 26th. We met the Labor Attorneys and Executive Session, relax and take an open session, entered into executive session under 105, one of the public officers' laws that discuss collective bargaining negotiations under Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. Approved a board resolution authorizing travel to Toronto, Canada by the two election commissioners in order to tour the Dominion voting facilities and view the new voting machines. This is part of the annual conference, which is held in Niagara Falls. Out-of-state travel requires DOT's approval. Standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials for retirement purposes. This is an annual reported requirement by the New York State Controller's Office, basically We had an issue of resolutions supporting a nine-element watershed plan for Seneca and Puget Lakes. This is what the meeting tonight is about. We had that meeting tonight, and Lisa Kepler came to talk to us, and we brought this off the table and back into the situation. We're going to be involved in this nine, nine-element situation, and we appointed Deb Molly and Paul Crumwarter to be on that board. So that's all I have, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Is this involving just Seneca Lake or what other lakes?
Cuca.
Uh, Cuca Lake.
Cuca.
I thought Cuca was, was under the government, under Governor Cuomo's mandate, is one of the priority lakes to investigate.
So is Cayuga.
I don't remember that exactly, which lake to use. I know that he left out Seneca Lake and Cambeau Lake.
Yeah.
But I don't know which other one for that. I can't remember.
I think it was just Cayuga.
Yeah, but I believe he stated Seneca Lake.
Did he?
Hasn't.
This isn't part of what that is, though. This is a whole different plan.
Well, still involves runoff.
Correct.
Okay, next, Supervisor Kaiser, Economic Development and Tourism.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real short, the committee reviewed and approved four of the resolutions that are on tonight's agenda. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Supervisor Eisen, Indian Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a brief meeting to discuss three different items. First one was talking about the Huguenian Nation and how they're allegedly forming a police force, a police department. And we discussed what they have, what jurisdiction they have, and what jurisdiction they don't have. I think we're, our conclusion was they have no jurisdiction until they become a reservation. We also had a county attorney, Fisher, and our attorney, Brian Vodario, reached out to the governor's office with Rob Williams, but haven't been able to contact him, so they're still trying to get an explanation from him. And we talked about the Unsevania County that's going to have a jail for the two Indian nations, so we think that's illegal too. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Eisen. More to come on that issue. Supervisor Brunau, Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In addition to the resolution, tonight's agenda, the committee approved a board resolution supporting the centralized arraignment plan for Seneca County. This was adopted at a special board meeting at the same night. We also recommend refilling a position of correction officer and refilling a position for data entry machine now for DWI. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, Supervisor Cromwether, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met June 26th. We spoke about a committee for a sighting committee for the incinerator. If the process gets that far, for the county manager, we'll appoint four members, and Robles will appoint four members. Are we that far yet? They haven't submitted a...
No.
Yeah, they haven't. And we also gave a shout-out to Lisa Perry for her research at the Water High School to turn the water to school district, to the first green school district in New York State. Other than that, there's no...
Thank you. Supervisor Trump, Public Works.
I can hear a report outside the resolutions that were followed.
Good. Thank you. Supervisor Reynolds, Ways and Means.
At the Ways and Means Committee meeting, we approved a resolution directing the finance director to pay the mortgage tax. This was approved of the full board at the special meeting the same night. We also approved a board resolution adopting the 2019 Workman's Compensation Budget. And we approved a board resolution to join the class action suit against the underpayment of payment on lieu taxes by the federal government. That was it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other reports of special committees? Not mentioned here. I know a lot of you sitting on these other committees. Does anybody have anything to bring forward?
Just given this month?
No idea. Very nice.
Okay. Anybody else? Supervisor Heisen.
Question along the mortgage tax. Have the checks been cut yet? They're like about two, three months late to being cut.
Well, the, this June's just passed, so it won't that far.
I know. Those have been passed about two or three months ago. Now, now boards are waiting for the money.
Mr. Chairman. They're like, with the resolution being passed inter, uh, warrant, they're gonna be in this week's warrant. It would be, yes.
We still haven't gotten our money yet, even though we're supposed to have them this Friday?
We're under a two-week warrant process, and these are going through non-process, and checks will be cut likely this Thursday.
Well, what happened? Why is it so late? Why aren't, why is the check so late? People are dependent on those checks to tell me. And can we don't have an answer for that?
Not sitting here this second, but if I look, uh, at the past, I think we're pretty close to what has been in the past.
Not what I hear.
It's get one June. We always get one June in the summer.
Supervisor Lozare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Uh, Community Services Board, uh, we had a, uh, mental health fair in Seneca Falls. You know, it was sparsely attended, and we were trying to figure out how to get more attendees at those, uh, for those well-needed services. And initial discussions, we, we thought we might want to bring a mental health fair down to the Southern Endel County. But we felt that we could get more people to attend if it was centered around another event. So, I'm asking all the supervisors in the Southern Endel County to, to think of an event that's upcoming. Probably in the fall would be better, so we could plan jointly a mental health fair and get some of those organizations down there to, to help the people see what kinds of services we do have in Seneca County. We understand transportation is a problem. That's why we want to go down to that end of the county. Because we have a vast array of services, and all people should be able to access them. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Very good. Great idea. Maybe people couldn't get to your, uh, your meeting because of River Road being closed. Okay, uh, a reprieve tonight. We have a full schedule, so I do not have any chairman's remarks tonight. Uh, county manager remarks. John, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick. We're still immersed in the opiate crisis in New York State. It's, uh, it's an emphasis item in ISAC, who the comptroller, and certainly the governor, and certainly this county. On our webpage, specifically the mental health page of the county, you'll find a video that attenuates the need for, uh, for more attention on opiate crisis, an opiate crisis solution. Later in this evening, you'll find a resolution from the Human Resources and Government Operations specific to supporting the nine-element plan, the watershed plan for, um, SWIO. I would bring note to the last resolu-, last whereas, where it indicates June 26th. Remember, this was tabled at the committee level. It's before you tonight. I would consider, um, an amendment, June 26th to this evening as immaterial, and we need not go through legislative process for merely that. We are amongst, we are, um, in the budget process, right? So remarkably, our next decision cycle is August. And, uh, September is when we're looking at departmental budget adoptions and also county managers' admissions adoption. So, I'd ask for the chairman of the pan-, of the standing committees to think of any emphasis items going forward into 2019. Relay that into the department heads, because we're, we are in the br-, the budget process as we speak. I'm obligated to assemble the whole county shared services panel once again. Um, minimally, one assembly to report to the state of what our actions will be in 2019. So, expect that assembly, uh, scheduled as well. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Questions? Supervisor Heisen.
Mr. County Manager, have you finished your investigation yet? And when will we be made perky of your investigation?
Then Supervisor Heisen, I can address that. Uh, we are going to have an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss that. County attorneys' remarks.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Margaret, Communications.
Communications, 120 through 135 have been received and filed.
Okay, resolutions and motions. Number 14, Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisors adopt 2019 Workman's Compensation Budget.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 15, Supervisor Reynolds.
Orders supervisors authorized joining the class action lawsuit entitled, entitled, um, Kane County, Utah versus the United States.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 16, Supervisor Trump.
Supervisors reject construction bids to refurbish sidewalks and back porch at Sweet Bear's Complex.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 17, Supervisor Trump.
Supervisors accept fifth for stealing and striping Senate County parking lots.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 18, Supervisor Trump.
Supervisors approve purpose of 2018 building trailer for Hywood Department.
Support. Motion made and seconded. This is a lone boy, as I learned. And Sam, thank you for sending out the information on that. Any, any other discussion on this? In no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 19, Supervisor Trump.
Approval to submit consolidated funding application to wastewater infrastructure engineering planning grant program in support of Seneca County Sewer District 1 and 2.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no discussion, all in... Are you going to discuss this Supervisor Heisen, or?
I have a question of, we, we went up for a grant a year ago in Sewer 1 and Sewer 2. Have we, do we ever get that grant?
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, can you identify which grant? We, we go up from any...
The Great Lakes or the Harbor or something? The Great Lakes, we were applied for the grant to pay for Barton and Judy's for this...
There's Northern Region, Region Border Grant. No, we were not successful on that pursuit.
So, how are we paying for that then? How is the sewer district pocketed then?
At this point?
Did you apply, did you apply to D E C for a grant?
To the?
Did you apply to D E C for that grant then? Remember, last year, D E C was upset they didn't get asked in that process.
My, my knowledge, D E C does not offer grants.
Well, they have a vehicle to it. Never mind.
Thank you.
Thanks for the interview.
Back on number 15. Is there any discussion on that? Topic?
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
Excuse me. I lined out. Nineteen. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion on that? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 20, Supervisor Brunau.
Correctional Officer Employees Week.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Base six? You missed that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 21, Supervisor Brunau.
Resolution to authorize payment for the presenting services from the William County Laboratory.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Number 22, Supervisor Kaiser.
Resolution appointing members to the Seneca County Planning Board.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Number 23, Supervisor Kaiser.
Appointments for the Seneca County Agricultural Enhancement Board.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 24, Supervisor Kaiser.
Supervisors authorize Commissioner of Public Works to issue request for proposal for the professional architectural and engineering services at the Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 25, Supervisor Kaiser.
Seneca County joins in a memorandum of agreement with the Finger Lakes Regional Land Bank Corporation.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? What? Being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 26.
Authorization for two of Seneca County employees to tour the Dominion Voting Facilities and view the new...
Wait a minute. I, I think that should be under, uh, government odds. Is that correct Supervisor Davidson?
I would think so. I did read it in my, uh, pre, uh, report. So, my name on it, but that's okay. I, I put it on the floor anyway. I guess anybody can do that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on this one, other than getting under the wrong committee? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 27, back to Supervisor Davidson.
Thank you, sir. Resolutions supporting nine-element watershed plan for Seneca and Puget Lakes.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
We need to change the date on this somewhere here.
Yeah, it's, it's down under the last whereas, June 26th. Change it to July 10th.
Support the amendment. You need to have a vote on the amendment.
Second on it.
Is that, is that required under a special vote?
Well, here again. I mean, you have a, you have a motion, and it's been, been supported. Uh, and then I gather a motion to amend and, uh, uh, second for the motion to amend. Why don't you go ahead and vote on the motion to amend it?
All in favor of the motion to amend?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, back on the original motion. Is there any discussion? Being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 28, Supervisor Davidson.
Standard Workday and Recording Resolution for elected and appointed officials for retirement purposes.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 29, Supervisor McGreevy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors approve to abolish one senior social welfare examiner and create fill one principal social welfare examiner.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 30, Supervisor McGreevy.
Chairman of the Board Supervisors authorized to sign in 2018, 2019 Supervision and Treatment Services for Juveniles Program, S T S J P Plan.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 31, Supervisor McGreevy.
Orders supervisors to approve Seneca County Division of Human Services Software Service Agreement with Northwoods Consulting Partners, Inc., for child welfare and other related services.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 32, Supervisor McGreevy.
Supervisors approve to abolish one fiscal services manager position and create fill one principal account clerk.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Nay. So noted, two nays, and opinion the chair that motion is approved. Margaret, did you get the two nays?
Supervisor Heisen and Supervisor Garret, if anyone?
Thank you. Number 33, Supervisor McGreevy.
Board approves creation and filling one full-time mental health clinical therapist for the Mental Health Department effective immediately.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 34, Supervisor McGreevy.
Authorized budget transfer for mental health hospitalization expenses.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 35, you're on a roll here.
County manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the S2AY Rural Health Network for consultant for the public health emergency preparedness grant.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 36, Supervisor McGreevy.
County manager authorized and directed to sign a service agreement with Kathy Bond, Emergency Planning Consultant.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Being no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 37, Supervisor McGreevy.
County manager authorized and directed to sign a service agreement with the S2AY Rural Health Network for F L P H A membership.
Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 38, Supervisor McGreevy. There'll be a little extra in your pay envelope tonight.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Number 38, Proclamation Rural Breastfeeding Week, August 1st through the 7th, 2018.
Support. Or? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 39, you're on a roll.
Number 39, Supervisors approve the appointment of Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board Member.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. We've already, uh, accepted number 40, was done earlier. Is there any unfinished business?
I would like to ask for Article 29.
For the purpose of?
I would like to discuss possible funding for the Sampson Dog Show that will be held in September.
Okay, under Rule 29. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the floor is yours. Supervisor Kaiser.
Uh, the dog show is going to be held in September this year.
The Dog Show is going to be held in September this year, like all these. And I think it's a very important and big event in the county. It could also possibly be an event that Mr. my neighbor here, Zaro, suggested that perhaps we have an outreach for our, for mental health services. But it's very important to the county, to the area, especially to the South County. I know hotels are very busy here in the northern as well. They, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Heisen. I think he can explain better the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Yes, I had a phone call last week from this lady from the Dog Show. And going back four years ago, when they were ready to get out of town and leave here because they couldn't make ends meet, we offered them $20,000 to stay if they needed it. By the time we got finished doing cost cutting and increasing their revenues with the county, the state, New York, and other people throughout there, they never asked for the $20,000. But now they're backed up, up being broke again, more or less. It's a not-for-profit anyway. And what they're happy with was the RTS bus. They had like a four-year contract with the bus. But our law said somebody else wants that, that business to do transport and whatever they did down there for the four days, they have to bid it up. Some, two different companies bid it out, so now RTS can't do it. So it's going to be about $3,000 more for the buses. And they aren't too happy because they aren't sure if these people really know what they're into. They hadn't rained in four years. But the RTS buses, if it didn't rain, they put dogs in there, and the dogs are all wet and everything else muddy, they might be too happy with their limos that they are going to provide. So they need maybe $2,000 or $3,000 unless they can cut a better deal. So I thought that we should at least, they have to have an answer in two weeks so they can plan ahead, so.
What's the date of the Dog Show?
Late in September. Last week in September, I think. But they've got to get their program together if they're really going to go do it again. Because they got like a drop dead date in two weeks. So I said to them, they hate to ask for money, but let me see if I can get you $2,000 or $3,000, like a grant from the tourism money. And if they need it, it's there. And that way, if they can't work this out, they can fall back on the ground.
We have an unallocated fund balance in the tourism budget. I understand of 100 and some thousand. John?
John, can you address that?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In probably the past years, the hotel occupancy tax, right? Now, that is not general fund money. That is specifically designed for the pursuit of tourism at your discretion and legislative body. But that was co-mingle with the general fund. The finance department has looked back in time and segregated those funds out to invest in their building, to correct that. If we just look at 2017 closing, our revenue per hotel motel tax was about 408,000. Our main expense was the TPA, Tourism Promotion Agency, function of a chamber at 275,000. So if we only look at 2017, we're over 133,000 surplus for discretionary funds at your demand in the pursuit of tourism. So a new appropriation of 5,000, 3 to 5,000 is not an issue here. Now, we get into the progress of it, right? Generally, in this penalty and bringing back me up, we don't distribute funds without some defensible service being attained. So that's another, you know, contractual or agreement or something like that, which we've worked around before.
Thank you, John. Wait.
Yes, sir. With this, looking at this situation, I think you don't make it $5,000 through. If they need the money, let them use it. If they don't, we'll use it for something else. What are they available? I think they need it. You said $2,000 or $3,000. I'll give $5,000 and then be done with it.
Supervisor Lazzaro.
And where is the show being held?
At Sampson Stadium.
Sampson Stadium.
Same place I've been for years.
And there's other venues that court them.
What's that name?
I say there are other venues that court that the business. They would welcome to take the Dog Show from us. I think we should do what we can to support it. It is a very large event.
It seems appropriate. Do we need to pass this tonight? Or can you just go back to them and say, the board of supervisors is willing to offer you X amount of dollars?
All right, we'll pass it tonight and it's official.
Well, the problem is the planning, they're in the planning, the late, very late stages of planning, planning the affair. And if we wait till August, I think we're going to miss the vote on that. I think it needs to be done today.
All right, I'll call in the county attorney. Frank, you look like you have something off.
I'm afraid I did, Mr. Chairman. As alluded to by the county manager, there are legal issues here that you've really got to discuss before you do something. I certainly wish that it had been brought to my attention before we get here a point where you suddenly want to pass something that's going to require more than just giving money because you cannot do that. If we wish to, if we wish to go into executive session to discuss those legal issues, I'd have no problem with that. But alternatively, there's more to this than simply giving $5,000 to a worthy cause.
I believe we've done this before to the Dog Show.
We, no, we have not.
Yes, we have. We gave $10,000 to the church in Seneca Falls.
Well, I'm referring to the Dog Show.
That was done under specific provision of New York State law.
The district court?
Was that church, funding a church for municipal government funds?
We did cork and fork a couple of years.
Yes, we did.
Kind of fair.
That is correct. I didn't even think.
County Fair is authorized by New York State law.
Fork and fork.
To do a, thank you, Frank. Fork and fork.
Could also fall on that.
Frank, is there a way we can make this happen?
There's a potential way, but again, that, I can't sit here right now and say, here's that way. Once again, this is my first exposure to this. I can't recommend passing a resolution simply saying we're going to give someone $5,000.
Subject to the legal contracts and getting everything worked out together.
There you go. And if for some reason it's not due, we don't, but I think we need to pass it tonight. We've done it with cork and fork. Frank, you were here as attorney. I don't know, maybe they need to look at it or you could think of it at that time, but we've done it. And this issue was never brought up before.
Dave, that's not correct. Anytime that this board has tried to give money to any worthy cause, worthy as it may be, the New York State Constitution comes into play. The only way that you can do that is if you can justify it through some other provision either of the law or through some kind of contractual obligation. And that is what we have done under certain circumstances in the past, such as the money which was desired to be given to the shelter, the animal shelter, the Beverly Animal Shelter. We arranged for a contract with them, and we are authorized to do that. In this case, I'm not sure how we would go about that. And that's why I say this is difficult.
So let's cut to the chase. I understand where the county attorney's coming from. Supervisor Kaiser, why don't you go ahead and make the motion that, to give this money to the Dog Show, contingent upon the county attorney researching the legalities, and the approval will come at the next board meeting?
Same motion, hey?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
That's my, that's my motion.
My thought is it's tourism money. It's not out of the general fund. Tourism money going to a tourism activity, it should be a very appropriate use of the money.
Well, you know, that's why I say let's move forward on this, on this motion, contingent upon the county giving time to research it, write the appropriate motion, and we'll take it through the next board meeting. We could actually do this in two weeks. We could recall a special meeting and take it, and do it through a committee meeting in two weeks. Would that help?
Yeah, but, you know, Frank could have go over and talk to Yates County because that's how they dispersed probably half of their money, truly to the tourism money through grants to different programs.
I'm sure there's a way. We've done it before. I'm sure we already have a way that we could do it.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Kaiser. Motion seconded by Supervisor Heisen.
For $5,000, right?
Yes.
To donate, to give the Dog Show $5,000 towards the operation of their show in September, contingent upon the county attorney's research and approval, and we'll impart this at the next board meeting.
And also with the funding available through the tourism promotional budget.
Through the, through the hotel bed pass. There's where it's coming from. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
In the opinion of the chair, this motion's passed. So Frank, you research it, come up with an appropriate motion, and we'll bring it through the next board meeting, committee meeting night. We'll call a special meeting to add that. Okay, any, any new business? Supervisor McReeby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to make the board members aware that the Pineview Circle Apartments will be holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Tuesday, July 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All board members are invited. I have handouts for everyone.
That's off 318, isn't it?
Just east of the 414 intersection. I have invited several of the state representatives to attend. I don't have any confirmation on that yet.
Okay, when is this date again? You have a handout.
Tuesday, July 17th. I can hand these out.
Sure. Very good. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other new business?